Welcome everybody to the City Hall. It's January 21st, 2020, and we're here at 6 o'clock at City Hall at 116th Westbridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council is now called to order. I'd like to call upon our Pastor Larry Dickens with the Faith Assembly of God. And I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. I guess my wife's in the crowd and I'm nervous, Aunt Larry, so you know. I would like to first of all introduce our honorary City Council member, Isabella Cruz, Abacus Elementary, Granbury ISD. You can give her a clap. Isabella Cruz is the daughter of Alejandro and Brittany Cruz. She is a sister to Anna Maria and Alejandro Jr., Gabriela Giovani, Catalina, and Camilia Cruz. Now, they're not all here tonight, but I understand she does have some of her teachers in the audience and some of the other folks, so welcome to City Hall, folks. She is a fifth grader in Ms. Williams' homeroom class. Ms. Williams says she is a very hard worker and is very bubbly and friendly. She will go above and beyond the call of duty to help others. Isabella is involved in the UIL and is a student council president at Abacus Elementary. Isabella plays basketball, softball, and is on the cheer team. She loves to play sports and is involved in all the school activities. She likes to clean, color, and listen to music. That's my kind of girl right there. Her and her family would like to thank everyone for this opportunity. And we want to thank Isabella for joining us and helping us out on the City Council. Let's give her a big hand. She was real nervous, but I told her, "You guys were all her neighbors out there, and she's nothing to be nervous about, right?" Okay. Now, we'll get down to Larry Dickens here. We're going to have Larry Dickens at Faith Assembly of God lead us in our invitation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own Isabella, our council member. All rise, please.
Shall we pray? Our Father God, we are so grateful when we have the privilege to come together to pray for those that are in authority over us. We thank you, Lord, for the many women that make up our City Council. We're grateful for the time and the efforts they expend to help us live in a safer and a better community. Father, we pray, in this era of divisiveness in our nation, that in our city and in our county, we would come together in the unity that your word speaks of as being blessed. And Lord, we know that the enemy of our souls is working to divide us even further. But Father, we come against that, and in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we ask for your blessing upon this nation, upon this city, and upon our county. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All mean the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of regard, individual liberty and justice for all.
Now, for the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, Pledge of Allegiance to lead Texas, one state of regard, one individual.
All right, at this time, we have a few presentations. I'm going to sit down here to the podium here. We've got about four presentations to present to the crowd. Our first presentation is a proclamation, January 30th, 2020, as the Forward Training Center Volunteers Day. If I could get, I think there's people from Forward Training. If I could get all those to just come up forward here and stand out here. I got your message. I got to think about it. Just say yes, okay. I know everybody in the crowd probably knows what Forward Training does, but they're a great group of people out there, and they do a great job for the community here. The official proclamation, whereas Forward Training Center of Hood County is celebrating the outstanding volunteers connected to the center for the precision time giving to so many appreciative students working towards building a better quality of life. And whereas the city of Granbury recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Granbury to be successful adults, and salutes the hard work these volunteers have given. And whereas some of the programs offered at the Forward Training Center are jobs-for-life, faith and finances, computer classes, general education development, and adult reading and writing, working one-on-one. And whereas the Forward Training Center volunteers have given so much time of themselves and time away from their lives, volunteer hours range anywhere from 56 hours per semester twice a year to those who bring meals, which can be three or four hours. And whereas the Forward Training Center volunteer positions vary from mentors, instructors, administrators, site leaders, student relation leaders, printer teams, receptionists, photographer, business partnership teams, business owners and operators practicing mock interviews, roundtable discussions, and resume-writing teams, nonprofit sharing resources, as well as others giving information on community resources and higher educational opportunities at surrounding colleges or trade schools. And whereas the graduates take away practical skills such as career assessments, resumes, vocational plan interview skills, and worth ethics training along with one-on-one mentoring, and the result in a changed life for the hope for the future. Now therefore, I, Ninhualt, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 30th, 2020, as Forward Training Center Volunteer Day, and I recognize these outstanding volunteers who have given themselves to educate, support, and inspire many lives. Thank you. And if you can see, that's just a small part of the group that's out there. If you ever go out there to visit the Forward Training Center, I'm sure they'd love to have you come and tour their facility out here. It's the old admin building for the school, and it's a great program. They've done a lot of things for that building, and they do a lot of things for the people in the community here. Our next program here is to acknowledge the Lake Granbury Area Beautification Council and Kiwanis Club of Lake Granbury for their donations towards Lambert Branch Park Improvement. So if I could get, do you want to get both groups up here at one time? We could get, let's get both groups up here. How about that? Pardon? Some of the parks people? And I think we have a presentation. Come on up here. We can get them all up here. Where's Aaron? How's Aaron? How you doing?
They gave money.
You got it. No, okay.
I think that's a bold statement. I think you should. It's a little green.
Mm-hmm.
It is a little green.
Can I do that for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we all should.
Don't you all love it? All right, you're on.
Okay. On behalf of the Granbury Parks Board, we would like to thank the Beautification Council and the Kiwanis Club for their generous donations, and they work very hard to make that money. So we appreciate it more than they know. Contributions from the Kiwanis will be used to purchase landscape materials, and funds from the Beautification Council will help to supply concrete or place structures. With the help of our community, we plan to make Lambert Branch Park a focal point of the city by enhancing the natural beauty of the area with landscaping, sidewalks, and nature-themed play areas. That is the most incredible park in town, and the wildlife down there is incredible. There's a serenity and a tranquility there that is not equaled any other place in the city. And for these organizations to be able to make that place something very, very special deserves our greatest gratitude, and we thank you so much. So once again, we'd like to extend our sincerest gratitude to the Kiwanis Club and the Beautification Council for their support and generosity. And we rely on contributions like this, these community organizations such as these, to make this project a reality. The Park Board came before the City Council when we had the idea for Lambert Branch, and of course, we knew the city didn't have the money. So they gave us permission to go to the community, which we did, and you answered loud and clear. Thank you so much.
Go out there and jump in there with the crowd. We're going to get some photographs. We're going to get some photo. Council, I guess the council could stand up first. We can see everybody on the council behind this. We're going to go ahead and get some photos. But folks, look at this. This is fifty, almost $16,000. Somebody asked me some time ago, "How do you fund some of these projects that you got planned for the parks?" And I said, "Well, it's not that we budget this stuff. We don't have a line item for it." But I promise you that the community will come together. The community comes together to help us on these parks. And here's just one example right here, standing in front of us, of the amount of money and the things that the community puts into our parks and stuff. So these are our parks, these are community parks, and we want to thank you guys for what you've done. Thank you very much. Next, on the program, I'm going to call upon Chris Coffin, our city manager. He's going to be recognizing some employees who have received various certifications in 2019, and also recognize our financial department for an award. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Hey, this is a great opportunity that we get to get together and celebrate achievements that we've made as employees throughout the year. So when I call your name, I'd like for you all to come up. There's a lot of you here. We may have a few that are not here, but we're batting a hundred right now, so we're batting a thousand. So in the Public Works Department, Jose Gudrez. Jose? Not here? All right. Jesse Sanders? All right, Jesse. All right. Well, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's hold the applause till the very end, because I was going to talk while y'all were clapping there. Just stand there by yourself for a minute, Jesse. He earned a Class C water license, water operator distribution license, and so that takes a little bit of work and a lot of hard work and going to class and dedication, so we want to recognize that. Jose, by the way, got a D and a C this last year, but he's not here with us. Pablo Nevada. Come on up, Pablo. And while he's coming, he got his D operator license, water operator license, so he's beginning here. So we got him going, and we're going to keep training him and keep that going. Trey McFate also received a D. Trey, you here? Not here. Paul Gast, Backflow Pressure Assembly Tester License, Paul. You know, these classes just don't happen, and passing the test isn't that easy for these licenses that we have. And most of them are required by state law. The D license is required. The C is required after you've been here a year, and then the others are advanced classes that require even more training. So Sarah Slaton also received a Backflow Pressure Assembly Tester License. She's ill. And then Waylon Roach, Basic Pole Climbing Certificate, Groundman Apprentice Certificate. Congratulations. Josh Maples, Troubleshooting Certificate. I keep saying certification, but certificate. Scott Buckaloo, Underground Installation Certificate. Daisy Bowling, Customer Service Inspector License. Joanne Common, Floodplane Administrator, Certified Floodplane Manager. So that's our Public Works, but we're going to gather everybody up here together, but we're doing it by department. So this represents a lot of training hours that these folks have invested, and also in investment dollars from the taxpayers to get them certified and licensed. People don't realize, when you go to work for the city, you got to have all these certificates to be able to do your job. The state just doesn't trust us to do our job. They want us to go through some training and make sure that we're doing everything the way they want it done. So we've got a few awards or a few recognitions. In the Police Department, as Intermediate Peace Officer Certification, Dustin Causey. Come on up, Dustin. And then Advanced Peace Officer Certification, Colin Walker. I saw Colin earlier. And then Braden Bozer, Advanced Peace Officer Certification. And Justin Pugh, Intermediate Peace Officer Certification. So welcome, guys. Thank you all for that training and years of service that it takes to get those certifications. In the Building and Permitting Department, we have Sean Green, Building Inspector Certification. Come on up, Sean. Rob McCumber, Certified Pool Operator. And then for Convention Visitor Bureau, we have Tammy Dooley received her Certified Festival and Associate. How long you been working on that one?
Twelve years.
Twelve years to get that certification. So last but not least, our very own Mickey Matlock with her Municipal Clerk Certification. So. Let's see if we can get them together. Maybe some of the other guys on the back? I want to get in here with you. I'll get them on the back.
Here in the back.
Not every day I get to hit it in the picture, then behind your cops.
You ready?
You never did. You're too. You're always with your hands behind your back. It's for something.
Now, we have another award we'd like to do, and it's really about transparency, financial transparency. And every finance director works really hard to achieve this goal. And Ava and her team have done a great job. As usual, Ava, would you and your team come on up to the front?
Yeah.
As they're coming, I want to tell you all a little bit about this achievement. This certification or certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the city of Granbury. We wouldn't get it without these ladies. By the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And what it's for is for our comprehensive annual financial report. Those are available online. We've got them catalogued annually by year. But let me tell you something. These ladies put in a lot of work to put that document together every year, and because of that, they're going to receive this award again. I don't want to suppose, but I would bet that probably five of you in this room have never even, or have looked at this maybe. I know this is my lifeblood here, but this is all about financial transparency. And if you're not taking the time to go to your local government and look online at what these ladies have put together for you, shame on you. I'm going to say, go to our website, go to financial reporting, and you'll see this. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It tells about the city, the state of the city, the debt that we have, the revenue that we have. Everything you want to know about the city government is right there in that report. And these ladies put it together every year, current information. And so with that, we want to say thank you and give you a round of applause. Thank you.
Photos, photos.
How many years in a row? About five or six. Instead of giving us a plaque every year, they give us a little round button to put on that marble. But that doesn't cheapen the value of that award, believe me. It's a very hard-earned award, and we want to thank our finance department for putting all that together every year. There's a letter in there that they helped me put together and populate. It's called the Management Discussion Analysis. It's a key building block for that document. They basically write that whole thing every year on my behalf and allow me to just sign the letter. And without them, you know, I would have to do all that work as well. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Chris. And like I said, those are well-deserved certificates, and they put a lot of their own time in those things, not counting the time that they're put into. So once again, thank you guys for everything you guys have done. At this part of the program, we're going to go ahead with the public comments. And this public comment is on agenda items that are for non-public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a limited time of three minutes allotted at this time for comment regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. So at this time, does anybody in the public wish to speak on any of the items or anything? We hear none, we'll close that, and we'll move on down to the consent agenda. Council, the consent agenda consists of two items here. We have the first item being considered approving the City Council meeting minutes of January 7th, 2020, regular meeting, and also consider approving the purchase of two law enforcement SIM range training force simulators from Laser Shot Inc. in an amount of $65,000 through an Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Opportunity. And we've already received that grant, right, Chris?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So council, you had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda items there. Are there any questions or any items on there you wish to speak about or to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Reiner and a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Consent agenda is approved.
Consent agenda is approved.
Thank you very much. Well, we want to congratulate, we want to congratulate our honorary council member. And at this time, we are going to present her with a certificate. The certificate is a distinction of honorary council member is presented to Isabella Cruz, Abacus Elementary Student Council President, on this 21st day of January 2020, in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and representing the qualities of an excellent council member, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn and myself, the mayor of Granbury. And we also, along with that, we're going to present her with a pen for the city of Granbury. If we can get the council to stand up here, and we'll take some photographs. Here's your pen. Here's your certificate. Council feels like that's all they've done today, is take pictures. And also, on the back of that certificate, she also has a certificate that's on the back of this, on this, and it's a certificate from us also that reads, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary council member with the Granbury City Council." If you keep this certificate. She's taking a picture. She can keep this certificate for her records, and as you apply for colleges and scholarships in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements. Your service to the Granbury ISD and as a student leader on your campus is truly appreciated. We wish you the best of luck on a bright future. Signed by Jeremy Glenn, Granbury ISD Superintendent, and myself, Ninhualt, the mayor of the city of Granbury. So we want to thank you once again. Let's give her a big hand for helping us out today. At this time, I'd like to have council member Eddie Rodriguez escort her back down to her family. Thank you. Thank you for sharing Elizabeth with us tonight. At this time, we're going to move into the deliberation agenda items. The first item we have on the agenda is to receive a report from Hibs and Todd on the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant projects and provide associated direction to the city manager thereafter. And the reason we're doing this, council, there's been some items on there, there's been some concerns with the city manager and some of the funding that I guess might say having trouble getting the payment due, and so we may have to move some monies from some different areas. But we're going to let Keith Kendall give us a presentation, then we'll probably hear some more from our city manager on some of these items. So Keith?
Mayor, council members, thank you. And also honorary council member Ms. Cruz, thank you for your attention tonight. For the record, my name is Keith Kendall, Chief Operating Officer for EmporTech Hibs and Todd. And Mayor, you're exactly right. We wanted to make sure we made the council aware of, you know, it seems like all the work is continuing on the water treatment plant. Got a great-looking ground storage tank. In addition to works continuing for the expansion to get us to five MGD, and we're moving on the wastewater. But it hasn't come without its challenges from the delays from the Texas Water Development Board, so we wanted to go over that timeline with you for both the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant, and go over some short-term solutions and what the Water Development Board is doing to try to reduce some of these delays. And before I start on this, just kind of as a reminder, as your blood pressure starts rising through this presentation or your frustration level is, the city has borrowed approximately $82 million from the Texas Water Development Board between the two phases of the water treatment plant, the meter project, the wastewater treatment plants, and going forward. So that savings to the Water Development Board is approximately $20 million. That's real dollars that you've been able to save to the right pairs of the city of Granbury. But nevertheless, projects still need to go forward and they need to continue on time. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the timeline for the Phase Two Water Treatment Plant. I'm going to go over all the different phases of that, some of the factors for that delay, and possible solutions. Discuss is Mr. Coffin's direction of possible use of city funds with reimbursement once the Water Development Board releases construction funds. And then last but not least, the current status of the wastewater treatment plant, its timeline and current status of review, and then followed by discussion. There are several items, and this is kind of before we get into the timelines, just to let you know so that you can see, as I go through different items or delayed, what they're actually about. So when we start the project, there's always what's called a planning phase. And that planning phase, before we can go to the design, Water Development Board needs to approve what's called an engineering feasibility report. Then the Water Development Board also needs to issue the environmental clearance for that project. Once those two items are done, we go into design and we issue what's called plans and specifications. Water Development Board and TCEQ need to review those plans and specifications to give those approval. And then we move forward with what we call the bid and award, which is the procurement of the C Mar contractor or general contractor for these contracts, depending on who it may be. But we're going to let Keith Kendall give us a presentation, then we'll probably hear some more from our city manager on some of these items. So, Keith?
Mayor, council members, thank you. And also honorary council member, Ms. Cruz, thank you for your attention tonight. For the record, my name is Keith Kendall, Chief Operating Officer for EmporTech Hibbs and Todd. And Mayor, you're exactly right, we wanted to make sure we made the council aware of, you know, it seems like all the work is continuing on the water treatment plant, got a great looking ground storage tank, in addition to works continuing for the expansion to get us to five MGD, and we're moving on to wastewater. But it hasn't come without its challenges from the delays from the Texas Water Development Board, so we wanted to go over that timeline with you for both the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant, and go over some short-term solutions and what the Water Development Board is doing to try to reduce some of these delays. And before I start on this, I just kind of as a reminder, as your blood pressure starts rising through this presentation, or your frustration level is, the city has borrowed approximately $82 million from the Texas Water Development Board between the two phases of the water treatment plant, the meter project, the wastewater treatment plants, and going forward. So, that savings to the Water Development Board is approximately $20 million. That's real dollars that you've been able to save to the right pairs of the City of Granbury. But nevertheless, projects still need to go forward and they need to continue on time. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the timeline for the Phase II water treatment plant. I'm going to go over all the different phases of that, some of the factors for that delay, and possible solutions. Discuss is Mr. Kaufman's direction of possible use of city funds with reimbursement once the Water Development Board releases construction funds. And then last but not least, the current status of the wastewater treatment plant, its timeline and current status of review, and then followed by discussion. There are several items, and this is kind of before we get into the timelines, just to let you know so that you can see, as I go through different items or delayed, what they're actually about. So when we start the project, there's always what's called a planning phase. And that planning phase, before we can go to the design, Water Development Board needs to approve what's called an engineering feasibility report. Then the Water Development Board also needs to issue the environmental clearance for that project. Once those two items are done, we go into design and we issue what's called plans and specifications. Water Development Board and TCEQ need to review those plans and specifications to give those approval. And then we move forward with what we call the bid and award, which is the procurement of the C Mar contractor or general contractor for these contracts, depending on who it may be. The review of that contract, once it's executed, and all the procurement documents and the associated DVE forms. So with permits and all of those items I just mentioned within that, then the construction funds are then released by the Texas Water Development Board. So let's look at where we're at on the water treatment plant in regards to the plan and spec review. We submitted the C Mar contracts to the Texas Water Development Board in January of 2019. You may recall that you procured the C Mar in November, and the executor could approve the contract in late December. So over a year now, we have not received any comments on that C Mar contract from the Texas Water Development Board, that being one of the elements to release construction funds. The C Mar bid packages were submitted electronically in September of 2019. What are the bid packages? Those are the different procurement items that C Mar does himself, of I'm procuring the membranes, I'm procuring the R O package, I'm procuring the piping, I'm procuring the pumps, all of those different items that need to be reviewed by the Water Development Board. Subsequently, in November, they asked to say, well, we need to have two hard copies by statute of each. We submitted those in November, and while I was there, staff made additional requests for revisions to those bid packages of other information they wanted. Subsequently, drove back, made those changes as quick as we could over the weekend, and went back and delivered those packages to the Texas Water Development Board with revisions by December. To date now, we have not received any comments on either the bid packages or the plans and specifications. The actual plans themselves, and just as a reminder, you got the board commitment in November of 2018, and you actually closed on funds in December of 2018. Of course, those part of those plans were, or funds were used for design, but majority of it was construction as perceived for, that has not been released yet. As far as the plans and specifications review, we submitted TCEQ approved. By that, I mean TCEQ had already reviewed and approved the plans and specifications for the water treatment plant Phase II. We submitted that to Texas Water Development Board in March of 2019. We received comments in late July, we responded back in August, and the Water Development Board issued what is called a technical conformance letter, that is, a not final approval of the plans and specifications, but that the plans and specifications conform technically with the requirements of both the Texas Water Code and the Texas Water Development Board. Subsequently, in January, we received three minor comments, after we were understanding we thought those plans were approved in September. So to date, the final approval letter for the plans and specifications has not been At this point in time, the city has submitted a $2.5 million pay estimate from the C Mar. You're well aware that we C Mar has been working for several months at the water treatment plant. You have a 1 million gallon ground storage tank that has not only been built, but it's actually been put into service. And he has not been paid one dime yet to date. And I credit Mr. Don Bailey, who's here tonight with Pepper Lawson Water Works, I can't say enough about them continuing to move the project along and to move forward. But part of tonight is about espousing some relief for them in going forward and making sure we keep the projects on track. He's verbally stated he's about $5 million into the project now at this point in time. And there's some ripples from that, you know, as, even though that all of the contracts have to be paid, when the C Mar is paid, it only goes so far, month after month after month. We do expect some equipment delays, if payments not received soon within it, because they just won't ship it without payment within that. So there are some things that we're trying to avoid with some possible actions tonight in going forward. So what have been our efforts to date to try to hit all of this off or reduce the delays? Well, back in January, after we submitted the C Mar contracts, I met with the Texas Water Development Board project engineer and went through all of the bid packages and those timelines to help coordinate that, or what we hope would pre-coordinate that review of the plans and specifications in the C Mar bid packages. We then met with February, the Texas Water Development Board and our senior staff, because I could see with the changes in some of the personnel, that there was going to be a hard time in them trying to fit what they call their design, bid, build checklist into approving C Mar contracts, which are quite different from what we generally call a hard bid, in moving forward. We raised those issues in February. To date, a lot of those issues still aren't resolved, which has been part of the delay that we've had. We've had monthly meetings starting in June, and that's continued even to this day. We have provided a project priority list, starting in September, and we've kept that every month, of here's the different items that need to be done. We need the C Mar contract reviewed and approved. We need to find a letter for the plans and specifications approved. We need the bid packages reviewed and approved. We did have another meeting in late July with both the city staff and the C Mar, Pepper Lawson, and ourselves, with senior management of the Water Development Board. We don't think that went very well in regards to still trying to discuss how for them to do the C Mar review within it, although it was recognized that the priority of Granbury are trying to move things forward within it. So with those discussions in mind, we have continued to talk to the Texas Water Development Board to resolve some of these factors I'm about to go over, because there's always two sides to every story within it. And then I will qualify this as saying that this is not a Granbury issue. These issues are now being seen throughout and have been seen throughout the state for not only C Mar projects, but for hard bed projects, or conventional what you're used to have, the design, bid, build projects. And that is, first and foremost, there's just not enough bodies. Water Development Board has a severe shortage of engineers for a variety of reasons. One, the legislature, quite frankly, just hasn't funded them. Their salary levels are way below industry's norms. You know, we don't expect state employees to make what you do in the private industry. But when I've got graduates coming out of college making several thousand dollars more than a senior engineer at the Water Development Board, that's an issue of keeping staff there. The other thing that's greatly exacerbated the problem of, not only do I have, not have enough bodies, now with historic low interest rates, everybody is wanting to get a project funded and take it. So their project workload has increased dramatically to the fact that now you're seeing each project review engineer with the Water Development Board has 30 to 35 projects, in addition to their administrative duties. And those administrative duties are not minor. They're at every mandatory pre-application meeting, they're also writing different elements of their program that is coming about, in addition to they have other funding programs like SWIFT that they also have to deal with. But last but not least, is probably the lack of understanding of the C Mar process, and not having a very clear written guidelines of how to review the C Mar process. So it has been kind of a, okay, we think this will work this time, but why don't we do this too the next time? And that has dramatically hurt the, getting the project moving forward. Now, I say to bring all these items up, not as an excuse for the Texas Water Development Board, but there are two sides to every story in going forward. What does not excuse is, when you have a shortage of resources, is you have got to start prioritizing. And contract startup, and contractors getting paid have absolutely got to be a priority for those type of projects. If I don't have enough people, I've got to prioritize those projects, just a plan review for something that has plenty of time to go forward. And that has not happened. We have been meeting with senior management, they have taken this very seriously, they are taking steps for long-term solutions that doesn't do anything for us right now. As you can imagine, the state, Texas Water Development Board is a huge state agency, you don't turn that culture and you don't turn everything around overnight. But they have recently been fortunate enough to hire four new project review engineers. They've implemented a project tracking system, which I think is probably the best thing that could have possibly happened, because that'll allow both the oversight by senior management, in addition to trying to prioritize projects that are starting to run behind, like Granbury has. They're also following up on with weekly meetings with the area teams. You may recall, we have six area teams in the state of Texas, Water Development Board, each of them has a team lead. Within it, well, their senior management about that is now meeting with each of those team leads at the beginning of the week going, here's the priorities that we discussed, here's what needs to be done. Then following up at the end of the week going, what didn't get done and why? So that's also underway, and I think that will definitely make a difference as we go forward. And then they are developing C Mar guidelines and their review process. We expected that draft to actually be out in December, but I think now that's probably going to be February, but time is done. So, short of racing down I-35 with our pitchforks and torches, what can we do to try to resolve some of this? Obviously, the C Mar can't continue without getting some type of funding available. Well, you may recall, when you passed the Texas Water Development Board Financial Resolution, you also passed a reimbursement resolution, because when we were starting forward, you approved our contract way back when, so the city used some of their funds to pay us to go forward, and then you reimbursed yourselves when you closed the loan funds. So I know what a part of Mr. Kaufman wants to visit tonight is, can we take some of the city funds and free those up to keep the C Mar getting paid, and then reimburse ourselves back once these delays are resolved with the Texas Water Development Board? The second item that could be done is, the city could take out a loan to pay the C Mar and continue that progress, but the disadvantages with that is, one, I don't have any budget to pay interest for a loan. There's nothing in that project to pay that. Secondly, things get a little more complicated when you take out a loan and pay interest on, that's going to be now reimbursed from a loan that you've already taken from a state agency. So the attorneys and bond counsel will definitely need to be involved in that. I've done several of those, and they're very complex, and they're, they're just not something that I would recommend you do, but certainly keep it as a last resort, it is a tool in your toolbox. I do, before I get into the wastewater treatment plant timeline, is also bring you up to date, I talked about all the reasons Water Development Board, but we did, I've been going down, like I said, every month, the Texas Water Development Board, if not twice monthly. We have seen some shifts. By that, I mean, and I'll qualify that as, we don't see really any shift until something actually comes out, but I have been on the phone with senior management, senior management being Amanda Levin, the Deputy Executive Administrator, number two person at the Water Development Board, and also talked with Jeff Walker as well, the Executive Administrator to Water Development Board. They are now personally involved in this. And for the first time, I've actually gotten promises from people that I know and trust that we're going to start seeing some things break loose, things being like comments. Can you give me comments back? Yes, go ahead.
How long have they been involved?
They are now...
The number two person?
How are they involved?
How long?
The number two person?
Is he a guest for you, or is it six months ago?
Yeah, probably about, only about a month within that. But they're, they've been made aware of it. The person that has been handling it quite a bit is the guy who is over all of the team leaders. Within it, he has been trying to implement many of the things I just talked about that they're implementing for long term, has recognized it as a priority, but it's come back to, well, you know, there's only so much we can get done in a day with the bodies we have. Well, that's not an acceptable answer within it, not when it's gone on this long for the timelines that you've seen within it. So they've been involved here in the past month, I will say, they're starting to see some things move. It certainly was a much more positive meeting Thursday, and then on the phone call Friday, going over actual comments with the Deputy Executive Administrator. So they're personally involved now in not only the review, but in addition to overseeing that it's getting done. So, having said that, I would only personally inject that if you're going to do anything like free up the city funds and expend those, I would not expend those to wait till the end of the month, because that's what I've been told, is they'll free everything up to at least get us comments back. I mean, if you're not going to approve anything, at least tell me if there's a comment that I can respond to within that. So I would certainly not write any city checks if that is the case you want to go until the end of the month to see where we're at moving forward. So the wastewater treatment plant, you did that clean water SRF loan the same time that you did the water treatment?
Before you get into the wastewater, let's talk about this.
You bet.
So we've, our contractor has constructed a little excess of a million dollar water tank standing there, and they've also been working on the backside of the, of the plant to expand the facility there. They've not slowed down. Have they got parts on order for this plant? Are we holding up ordering parts because of this funding scenario?
They're not holding up ordering parts. What the shoe, I guess, has not dropped is, when they do order, like for instance, we've got some more membranes to come in, that there is a fear that the supplier might say, I'm not shipping them. But it has not happened yet within it, but that certainly could be a possibility. But it's not holding up ordering anything, but there's no guarantee that somebody might push back and go, wait a minute, I haven't been paid for what I've already sent you to date, and I'm not sending you anything else.
Right, right. So, um, so kind of what I do, kind of in layman's terms is, this is for simplicity for public consumption, is, is we're building a house, and we were expecting a construction loan, and the bank is holding it up. That's basically what's going on here in, in layman's terms. And so they're holding it up because of the reasons you listed.
Yeah.
And so that's causing us some problems and, and concerns. Number one, we want to, we want to get that project in gear and keep it in gear, and so far, Pepper Lawson has just kept right on working without getting paid for a year. And I personally have a problem with hiring people to do work and not paying our bills. So our reputation is worth a lot more to us than it is to the Water Development Board, and so that's rose the ire to get it to this level, to where the council is, is being informed about what's going on at that water treatment plant. And we've been patting our foot and being very patient with these folks for, for months, and I think that time is over. And so, you know, we're looking internally to, to work with y'all to release some of our reserve funds that are unrestricted, and, and just like we bought the land, remember we bought the land for the west, the east wastewater treatment plant? We're still waiting to get reimbursed for that upon the process of the Water Development Board, and we'll talk about that in a minute. It's the same principle, we need to pay some bills as far as we can. We don't have enough money to pay everything he's done to date, but we could probably come up with something to, to free up some of their cash flow as well. So that's just kind of phase one of this whole conversation. Then we get to wastewater treatment discussion and go from there. Y'all have any questions on the water treatment plant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Maudeley?
So you made the statement that there have been delays, and basically we're pointing toward Austin, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you think they would say the same thing? I mean, the comments we get back, the limited comments we've gotten back, are they something that have delayed this process? Because don't you?
That's the, that's the issue. We've been on, you've seen the dates that we submitted, we haven't gotten any comments back, not, this is not right, or this is not the format, or you didn't do this in time, or this needs to meet this requirement, nothing. I mean, I could fix something if you'd tell me what needs to be fixed within it, and I'll go back to, if you want to see whose side is it on or which is it, okay, let's go through the previous C Mar project that you did, the $15 million water transmission line. Same C Mar, Pepper Lawson, same engineer, E H D, City of Granbury, approved design in September. The following year, in October, you had 40,000 feet of line work completed with the Water Development Board funding and no hold of. So what's changed since that time?
So I guess your answer to that question is yes? You would say the same thing, you're the problem?
Yeah.
I guess my frustration is, why are we hearing about this a year later? I mean, if, if, if I was a contractor and I had $5 million into a project, and workers threatening to leave, I mean...
Let's shorten, let's shorten the year time up to about six months, because keep in mind, we wanted, the city wanted to move forward fast, so the contractor started early before we even had the TCEQ approved plans done right after that. So he started, starting the working, ordering equipment, and moving everything else forward. TCEQ approved the plans in March, we knew that usually it's going to be three or four months. That's what we were expecting for the Water Development Board's review time. We were not expecting nine months.
And my problem is, when we're expecting three to four months, and we get into six months, that's when we ought to be made aware. If I'm a contractor, if, if, if I have a contractor working for me, and he's got guys threatening to walk off the job, surely I've got an idea prior to, prior to a year later that this is a possibility. And I agree with Chris, we've got to worry about our reputation out there, because a lot of these contractors work all over the state, and it, and I can tell you, if I'm a contractor, and I can go over here where they, I know they're going to pay their bills, or come to Granbury, where this is going on right now, you see the, you see the spot we're in right now.
And, you know, then that blame is on me of not letting y'all know sooner, because I...
I'm glad you see that, because I see that too. We did, we just want to be in the loop. I mean, when you, when you said, hey, let's get ready for the blood pressure raise, that one comment, mine's already up, because I know where this is headed. And it's frustrating that we find out there's a problem when we're way, way deep into the problem. It doesn't get better.
So, well, we're not trying to hide it, but the point that I was making to Mr. Kaufman was, was... was, was, okay, we could go down there and raise all kinds of cane about it, but then they just shut down. Because it's, it's like every other state agency, they'll start slow walking things the more we just rise above their heads. But which part do you keep going with? That doesn't excuse the fact that we didn't let council know about this sooner than later.
That's my point. I'm saying going down there and threatening people is not going to do anything, but the fact that we, we are just finding out about that, that's, that's my issue here.
So let me, can I-
Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
To address that a little bit, we had a conference call, was it in October?
Yes, sir.
With, with the engineering team that's reviewing all this because I was frustrated and, and asked for that conference call. So during that conference call, they, they informed us that they needed written documents that we had not provided on the first C-Mar, on the, on the bid packets. So they said as soon as we get that done, we'll be able to release these, release the funds and approve everything. So I said, okay, Connie, I would like for you to call me back and let's have another conference call once you received all these documents that you say that we're not supplying you and you've reviewed them. And I still hadn't had that phone call yet. And so I've been very patiently giving them time through the Thanksgiving holiday, right up until before Christmas, and then we started talking again, and then we had another meeting last week. And he'd been going down to Austin twice a week working with them. So we're just, we're just getting to the point where we need to let you know and, and get going on it. So I really anticipated the solution. They promised a solution the week after Thanksgiving. And so the week after Thanksgiving rolled around, nothing happened. We started going, he started getting on them. I said, do I need to get the state senator and elected officials to stormtroop at their office and say, what's going on? We got to get our project done. Let me keep working on it. And so that's where we're at today.
Mayor? Hefner Rodriguez.
All right. So Chris, if I'm understanding, it's TWDB that's keeping the funds. Is that correct?
Yes, they, they loaned us the money, the money we've taken receipt of. We're drawing interest on that money, but we can't spend it until they have issued the approvals.
And do we have a point of contact for TWDB?
Yes.
And how many attempts have we tried to make to that individual about this issue?
Keith has done all the work for us and he's going down there twice a week now, so.
Be glad to go back through that slide, but we've been doing that since June, meeting with that, those individuals every, at least twice a month.
I mean, you haven't had any type of comments coming back and you're waiting for a resolution. I would, I mean, as a contractor, I would be calling consistently my bank if they're keeping me from moving forward on a project. I understand that we're, we're moving forward on this project, but the contractors aren't getting paid. It would put more pressure on us, which would in turn put more pressure on you. In turn, you would put more pressure on TWDB if nobody was getting paid and there was no project moving forward.
Yeah, and I will add the pressure is definitely on us too because currently today we're carrying almost a million dollars. I've worked out that water treatment plant for a year. Had got pied dime. I've done design for the south wastewater, wastewater treatment plant that's already been approved by TCEQ, hadn't been paid a dime.
Yep.
You'll say, yeah, and I'm a small, I'm not a large contractor, I'm a small firm.
And just like any contractor, you want, you want your, you want a draw of some type in order to compensate some of the materials you've already bought out of your own pot of money and some of the labor that you've already had to expend. So I, I don't have a problem with getting to a point where we can pay or give them a draw of some type in order to relieve some of the, the financial burden that the company is, is experiencing at this time. So that's just my, my opinion.
All of those coordination efforts we've done to date, they're not in our scope. We're not going to get paid for any of that. We're just trying to get it moving forward as fast as we can.
Keith, in your past, I mean, you've, you've worked with other communities and other projects similar to this. Has this been an issue like that?
Yeah, I've worked with the Water Development Board almost 30 years and it's going up and down in regards to what I would call the box checkers that staff will do will come in and it's very difficult to get projects through because they're just trying to check boxes and they're very inexperienced. But I have never experienced this type of delay for this long. And I can only reiterate again, this is not a Granbury issue. We are seeing these issues-
It is now.
Across the state. It is not just C-Mar contracts, it's hard bid contracts as well. And, and you know, it, it's, it's, it's pretty serious. I've talked with the legislators that I know about it, several of them, to, to let them know that, you know, this has got to change because what happens is I've got contractors now, very good contractors in Lubbock and other regions of the state, is if it's a Texas Water Development Board project, they won't bid on it. And if you actually do talk them into bidding on it, they'll put a 50% adder on it. Yeah, so those, those are real issues that come with these that's got to change. I think the Water Development Board is taking the right steps to do it, but I, you know, it's like turning a large ship. It, it didn't get here overnight and it's not going to be resolved overnight. Having said that, I do think that a lot of other projects are being put off because there's a lot of staff in the Austin office working on Granbury right now.
Keith, at what time, at what point financially are you saying, okay, we can't move this project any further?
Well, that, that's the whole point of tonight and, and talking with the C-Mar, we'll continue to roll. We, we've always been there for the city and we will continue to always be there within it. And we, you know, so as long as I can continue to make my payroll, we'll keep, we'll keep rolling within it. The C-Mar, we have got to get him some relief and that comes to this wastewater treatment plant presentation because he doesn't mind, and he's verbally, he stated, he said, I don't mind keep things going because for us to keep on track for the wastewater treatment plant, we really need to continue at risk. At risk being the delay of the funds, again, getting resolved or this continuing delay. But he's got to get some kind of payment in. And so if he could get payment, this is him saying, I'm done, you feel free to jump in on it. But if he can start getting payment on the water treatment plant, that helps him because a lot of the things we're ordering for the wastewater treatment plant, they're not paying right away. The equipment packages and things like that, those costs don't come in right away. So we have a few more months to say, should we get this thing resolved? But he would certainly feel a lot better of ordering all that and continuing to move forward if he can get some kind of money coming in for the different projects within it. I think that would make his life a whole lot easier based on the discussions we've had at our monthly construction status meetings.
Well, from a construction point, I can understand his viewpoint because as long as construction has continued to move forward, he's guaranteed some type of reimbursement. But I mean, you know, if, if he doesn't move forward, then he's not guaranteed any type of future work at the same aspect. You know, it's, it's kind of a double edged sword for us. If we can, we say yes, continue, you know, it's great for us because we're that far ahead on the project for the wastewater, but we're still in the same predicament. Now the, the debt of that budget just continues to rise and we don't see any relief because TWDB is holding up the, the loan for us. And then if for some odd reason they don't prove it, we have to go a different route.
It's already approved, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't see that not approved.
The funding has been issued. We have issued, we have issued the bonds for this money. It's just sitting in a bank waiting for the Water Development Board to say, yes, you can spend those funds on this project. And you know, if it passes the TCEQ engineering guidelines, this other review that they're trying to provide is red tape as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you've got one state agency that's in charge of the water, quality of water and wastewater, and the Water Development Board is the loan mechanism and the water planning mechanism, and now the floodplain management for the state, they, they're overloaded. There's no way they, they're dysfunctional and we're just going to call it that in this meeting. And you're dysfunctional, Jeff Walker. Get, get it together for us. You know, he's the executive director of that organization. We need some, some function from this organization. And so this is, so we've been talking about the water treatment plant. We're making great advances there. The wastewater treatment is, is very important to us because strategically, the east water plant is, is a, is a strong, is a stranglehold on us if we don't get it done quickly. So turn, can we turn to that part of the conversation now?
Yeah, you can, but one, one other question and it's going to relate to the other one too, Chris, but you know, is there a timeline that we could actually move these funds around and wait for reimbursement? I mean, are we going to wait for a year or wait?
I think what we're going to talk about when he's through with this is talk about what I would like for y'all to authorize me to do.
Okay.
But y'all need to see the whole picture.
Can I make one more suggestion?
You can.
Can we get, we show up here with a packet, we get a week early and there's nothing in our packet related to this. It would have been nice to see some of this before we get here.
I wasn't asked to do this presentation before the packet went out.
Yeah.
Okay. When was that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I, I had lunch with him on Wednesday and I said this is-
What I'm asking is going forward, if we get this, because I feel like I was invited to a birthday party and I'm heading, and I'm in a funeral right now. You get what I'm saying? I was expecting a really good report and I'm still waiting for the good part.
He got this, he got this to us yesterday. So he's working on it all this time and he's also been in Austin trying to get some, some footing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait.
Yes, sir. So as I mentioned, y'all took the clean water SRF loan at the same time that you did the drinking water SRF funds, funds as well. We submitted that engineering feasibility report that goes back to the planning level for both the south plant and the east plant in April of 2019. That's significant in regards to the south plant is actually already covered by the environmental clearance called a category exclusion. It's much simpler. The east plant, EFR, that's probably not been approved because the EID and FONZI hasn't been issued. For an EFR to be approved, it has got to go forward, getting environmental clearance before they can approve that. So that's-
Tell us what EFR stands for.
That's the engineering feasibility report or EFR written in there. And that basically is the planning document, the final planning document before we go forward with plans and specifications. So we did get the environmental clearance for the south plant in May of 2019. We submitted the environmental information document in September of 2019, but we have not received any comments to date on that environmental information document. For the C-Mar contract plan and review, we submitted those contracts in March of 2019. No comments to date on those C-Mar contracts as well. The TCEQ approval of the south plant plans and specifications is expected in January 2020. We got two minor comments back from the TCEQ. Josh Berryhill is our respondent back to those, so I'll be very surprised if we don't get the TCEQ approval of the south plant in January. We'll be submitting the plans and specifications after that TCEQ approval to the Texas Water Development Board for their administrative review. We hope we're going to be going down there. TCEQ has really recognized as doing a technical review for wastewater. There's a memorandum of agreement between the Water Development Board and TCEQ for water review, where there's a lot of technical review by the Texas Water Development Board as well, on water only, but wastewater is mostly TCEQ. So we're going to try to make sure that that process goes a lot shorter for that. And then we'll be following up with the east plant plans and specifications to TCEQ for review in February of 2020. We've also scheduled a pre-coordination meeting with the Texas Water Development Board for this month to go over all of the bid packages for the south wastewater treatment plant in addition to the equipment packages we referenced for both the south and the east plant. Both of those have, all have the same equipment. We want to make sure that we take advantage of the economy of scale when those bid packages go out. Last item I'll ask is the permit application. That was submitted in September. It was declared administratively complete in November by the TCEQ. They did publish their notice of receipt and they intend to obtain a permit. So we're just waiting right now for TCEQ to issue that draft permit so we review and comment back before the final issuance of the draft and publication of it. So the permit is well under its way. The south plant plans are approved by the TCEQ. We hope to get a very short review by the Texas Water Development Board since they normally don't do a lot of the technical review for wastewater treatment plants within it. And we have been told that we will get comments back on all of the C-Mar contracts this week. That includes the Granbury wastewater treatment plant and the Granbury water treatment plant within it from the Texas Water Development Board. So we should be well underway of trying to, you know, even though the water treatment plant has suffered, I would hope with the changes and the priority that we're seeing right now that the wastewater treatment plant will manage to stay on track and on schedule at this point. We still are, but the bottom line is the C-Mar has got to have some type of funding coming in from somewhere for him to continue to go forward. So Chris, I think this is probably, if there's questions on the wastewater treatment plant, I'll be glad to answer any you might have.
So just to refresh everybody's mind, the east water plant, east wastewater treatment plant, we bought the land, went through the environmental part of it. That takes time, more time than is necessary or reasonable to me, but it does take time and then they review it. And we can't move forward with being reimbursed for our expense for the land until we get that environmental clearance, the FONZI is what they call it.
Yes, sir.
So what is your timeline on that, do you think?
I have been told that that draft of that FONZI is routing now for review and signatures, Chris.
Okay. So you think within the next month that will be approved?
It should based on if, if they're already sending things out for routing, that's usually about 30 days by the time that comes out.
Is that through TCEQ?
Oh, this, this FONZI comes from the Texas Water Development Board.
Okay, that comes from them too?
Yes, sir.
Do you think they will reimburse us for the cost of the land at that point?
Yes, sir.
They'll release those funds and then we could use those funds to work on other things?
Yes, they should, yes, sir.
All right. So I heard him say earlier that we shouldn't do anything till after the first month because of the progress he believes is working right now. What I would like to do in the interim period between now and the end of the month is, number one, work with our, our, our financial advisor, John Martin, and, and ensure that we're walking in hand with him the way we need to be. But we need to come up with some interim funding solutions for this project, for both of these projects. And so, you know, we've got a little bit of money in unrestricted reserve that we could utilize towards this and we'll, we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting in, in February as a possibility, how much that is and what that looks like and what that will be paying for. We'll get with Pepper Lawson and with, and Protect, Hibbs and Todd and, you know, articulate all that, 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 that funding would go towards. And then we'll also look at refresh on the timeline to getting reimbursed. And then if we need, if we need another construction loan at our financial institution, we can look at going into, walking across the street and borrowing six, eight million dollars on a 12 month note or a 10 month note and pay it back with the bond funds when they release it. We just need to look at all those options and bring it back to you and, and get your attention with that. So that's worst case scenario that we end up having to refund the bonds and issue debt somewhere else. That's the worst case scenario. So that's as bad as it would get. And, and because of their dysfunction, that could happen. And that's, that's disappointing. I mean, because like he said at the beginning of this presentation, overall, the discounted interest rate saves us about $20 million over a 25 year period. That's substantial. It's unfortunate we're having to go through the headaches and the heartache to get there, so. But I will say that ImperTech has been working to, to get this going, not only for us, they represent other cities too with the same problem. And, you know, I'm not above sending out 575 emails to my friends that do what I do for a living and say, let's go to the Water Development Board, all you folks that are in the same problem, and let's talk to them about it. So that's my next step is, is do we want to get that involved in bringing, bringing some public face, some city face to them face to face? And if, you know, that's a decision that we're going to have to make in the next two weeks, so.
And I'm not opposed to going and, and teaming up with the, the state rep center, whoever we need to team up with or whatever, whoever I need to speak to in Austin and not, you know, not to, to beat up on anybody, but to understand it and understand what we're doing here and what our needs are and showing our budget and stuff. So, you know, if those people are out there, if there's possibility that we can do that, I'm, I'm ready to do it.
Hey, yeah, it's, it's a real issue. Hood County is the ninth, ninth fastest growing county in the United States. And cities have got to be able to get ahead of the curve on infrastructure and you can't do that with the delays that we're currently seeing with the Water Development Board in releasing funds. And that's, that's a statewide issue that, that has got to be addressed immediately.
So they're talking about approving your C-Mar contract that was issued in January of last year. They're talking about finally approving that within this month?
Yes, sir.
And then the one in March that we issued, they're talking about approving that this month as well?
Correct, yes, sir.
Simple contract.
Stack 'em up?
Yeah. It's, you know, it's a stack of paper about that thick, but still, it's, it's a template, you know? It's the same, same contract everybody uses.
It's the same for my, for all of ours, yes, sir.
So now that I got your attention, when you drive by that water tank over there, you'll understand, it's pretty, but it's not paid for. And we can't get them to do their paperwork to get it released, so. We're, we've paid for the, the pretty part of it out of our funds as voted on, but we can't seem to get our Water Development Board to release the funds to pay for the rest of it, so. Pepper Lawson, Don is here, appreciate you and what you've done for us and keeping the work moving forward. Believe me, we, we want to speed this along any way we can, so. That's what I'm asking for, Council, is just acknowledge that we, we're addressing a situation. I'll put together some scenarios and bring back to you at our next meeting. And if you want me to do something different than that, I'd sure like some direction.
Well, you know, I couldn't get the trolley fixed, and I took Tammy Dooley to help me out, so maybe I should take Tammy Dooley down to Austin and see what I can fix down here. You ready to go, Tammy? Okay. Seriously, Keith, I mean, anything I can do or the council can do, we, you know, if we can get in front of some people and, and do what we need to do to light a fire on them, or find out, you know, just to understand it too, you know, and to
Sure.
make sure that they know where we're at too, you know?
Do you think Mr. Walker would be interested in coming to our next council meeting?
I have no idea.
I mean, as much money as we've borrowed from him, surely they'd show up. I think we'll invite him.
I'm ready.
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I'd like to know what, the amount, I guess, that we're looking at pulling from our own funds.
I think he's gonna lay that on us.
Right.
Chris, Chris is gonna come up with that, so we're gonna have to do those funds and find out what the amount is and the timeline, I guess.
And the possibility of where, what, all places that we can put, pull from, instead of just one option, you know? Give us a couple of options.
They gave us back here on our computer right now, trying to figure it out, so.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Keith. I say thank you, but.
Whose birthday is it? Today's Tony's birthday, how he says.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Tony.
Happy Molly's birthday?
No, but he thought I was going to birthday.
Well, we'll look forward to, well, we'll go forward on that with Chris and, and the financial department, find out what we need to do in, in the interim, but I hope it doesn't stretch out too long here. Our next item is to consider appointments of the following city boards, the commissioning committees, building standards, plumbing adjustments, appeals board, capital improvements advisory committee, cemetery board, ethics commission, Grandberry Cultural Arts Commission, Grandberry Parks Board, Grandberry Regional Airport Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Municipal Utility Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Public Television Channel Advisory Board, and the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Council, you've gotten, you have received a template pretty much of all the boards that, openings that there are, the qualifications, the people that have applied and most of their applications, probably all of their applications. So the way we normally do this is we'll go through each one of them, and we will take nominations, and, and then we'll vote from the, the dais here on who, who selects who, and then when we come up with the needed people, then we'll vote to put those people in those appointed positions. So, any questions? We will just go right down through the board. Everybody has one of these, hopefully, so we're all working on the same thing. Chris, you can almost take a break, you know? So the first one's gonna be the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustment and Appeals Board. This one here is, there's one note on there, "The general contractor, assurance agent and the plumber are needed to fill the expiring date. We have not received an application from a plumber." Now, I did hear some council members asking the attorney here whether a general contractor would qualify for this, or is that?
Yeah, we, we did discuss that.
And is that?
Well, I mean, we don't have a plumber, so, um, yes. This is one of your boards, you can designate who's going to be on it.
Okay.
Certainly, a general contractor should have the knowledge necessary to fill the vacancy as a plumber, so the answer would be yes.
Okay, so we don't really have, as I said, plumber, but we have some general contractors, so council, if you'd like filling that with a general contractor, we may do so. So here, we have, we have three vacancies. One of them, the, the person on that vacancy is not seeking reappointment, and then we have two, the, two of the opening. So in large, we have three vacancies for the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustment and Appeals Board. So at this time, I'll entertain nominations to put three people on this board.
Mayor.
I've got Councilman Wadley.
I'd like to nominate John Curtner, Norman Faunt and Scott Yater.
Okay, we have three right now. Is, council, is there any other, others that would like to be nominated?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to throw Walter Harding in there.
We've got them all. So we've got them all. I'll just start down at the top of the list here, and we'll have a show of hands. Remember, council, you only have three votes on this one, because there's three openings, so you can vote for three people. How many vote for John Curtner? Show of hands. I got one. They, they hit one, two, three, four.
We have to vote for three? Is that what you said, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're going back up here. Five on Curtner. How many vote for Norman Faunt? Norman Faunt. One, two, three. Help me out, Carla. Walter Harding. One, two, three, four. And Scott Yater. One. Yep, one, two, three, four, six. Everybody voted three times, right? So what I have here is the top three is John Curtner with five, Scott Yater with six, and Walter Harding with four.
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez. Yeah, um, this is just my personal opinion.
Okay.
Mayor, we, we have so many applicants for all these different boards. You know, and, and then we have like Norman Faunt, John Curtner, that are, are applying for multiple boards. I like to put it out there just for the rest of this, the councilmen, you know, let's give the opportunity for people that've never been on boards, and let's just, you know, have people that are on one board, not be on other boards.
And that's what, council, that's what we try to do, and, and we went through this. There was a time when we didn't have enough applicants, you're right, we have a lot of applicants now, and that's why council has been carrying these around for about a week now, maybe more, longer, two weeks? And hopefully, they have dissected it, looked at it, scratched out, put in, whatever, and maybe even talked to some folks, because that's what they're here for, to determine who we want to put and where we want to put them. There may be times when we'll have some people on multiple boards, we try not to put them on multiple boards, especially if it's a board that meets every month. So we don't want to double them up with these, and, and we also want to take in consideration, okay, this person put in for this one, so we're gonna move them down to the next one. And so, that's kind of what we're doing, and, and you also look at, and Carla's done a good job, she's also put on there their first, second, third choices, so these are their priorities, you might say. And also put in their, the dates that they've been on boards, so to show that, who's been on boards along and stuff. So there's several things that we put on, in this for, for us as the council to make the decision on who we put on the board, so.
Right, and that, and that's where it gets me, where Norman Faunt, you know, this is his number one board.
No, it's number four.
Well, I looked.
On his list, it's number one.
I looked on his list, his application, and it's number one.
Oh, is it?
And, and this is Walter's Harding's number two, and when, when we moved on to capital improvements, then capital improvements will be Walter Harding's number one choice.
And Faunt's number two.
And Faunt's number two, so I, I don't know, I mean, for me, I would rather have somebody that is really wanting to serve on that board as their number one to be on that board.
I got him number one, I got him number four.
So.
He changes application?
Oh, he does change it a lot, okay.
Okay, all right, so the numbers that reflect for Norman are the ones that are correct on this one? Okay.
I think it's four.
So we, if we choose Walter Harding for the build, for Building Standards, then, you know, then we can't choose him for Capital Improvements. I mean, we can, but.
We, like I said, there may be cases where we will do that, and we can put them in there, we just merely a suggestion that we do not do that, we've not set the, a rule saying that this, or striking these people out of carrying two different offices, because there may be instances where we run into that.
I might just add, since.
Oh, I told you, go sit down.
The Building Standards Plumbing Adjustment Board of Appeals has not met in my entire tenure here.
That's a, that's a.
That's a challenge board to interpretation of the Building Code.
And I think I mentioned that earlier, there are boards that don't meet very often at all. There's some boards that we may later on consider even eliminating and moving into other boards. So those are considerations you have to take in place. There are some boards that are really, really active, and so we want to make sure we take in consideration those people on those boards that have served a long time possibly, or, or putting the right persons on those boards and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to, to serve on some of them boards.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
And also, will I point out that this is not, the folks that are up are not all of the members of the boards. There are some people that are applying that are already on a board, that aren't showing up on this list because their, their term's not expiring right now.
So they're already on.
There, it's a lot, it's a lot longer list than you think, so if we, if we limit it to one, we could have one person where their two boards are coming up on the same year, but those are the only two boards they're on, we could have somebody that shows up once, but they could be on two, two additional boards. So that's the challenge with a lot of this, is, yes, we'd like to have one person, one board, but effectively, we simply don't have enough applicants to do that, because some of these are on multiple boards that you don't see in the upcoming year.
Okay, so we have, we've, we've selected, we've nominated, we've voted, and we've determined that the, the three to put on the Building Standards, Plumbing and Adjustment Board would be John Curtner, Walter Harding and Scott Yater. Do I have a motion for that, council? We have a motion by Councilman Reiner, a second by Councilman Mobley. We have a motion and a second to put John Curtner, Walter Harding and Scott Yater on the Building Standards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we're moving to Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Here again, the notes are, point two members, the committee consists of not less than five members who are representative from real estate development and building industry as well as non-representative in the ETJ. There are currently ETJ representatives on the committee, therefore, that requirement has been met. These are people that you don't see on the list, probably. And what we have now, we have two people that are coming up on this board, that is Walter Harding and James Jarrett. James Jarrett and Walter Harding have both said they want to be reinstated. So we got two openings with three applicants. We got Norman Faunt once again, Walter Harding once again, and James Jarrett. Council, I will entertain nominations for these two boards.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Reiner.
I'd like to nominate Norman Faunt and James Jarrett.
We have Norman Faunt and James Jarrett. Do we have any more nominations? Hearing none, I guess we could just go ahead and vote, I mean, we have two, two nominations, Norman Faunt and James Jarrett. All, I'll entertain a motion to nominate those two.
So moved.
I have the motion by
Greg.
Greg Corrigan.
Second.
And Mr. Wadley. Get the kick out of that. Council, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of Norman Faunt and James Jarrett for the Capital Improvements Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move down to the Cemetery Board. The Cemetery Board notes appointment for members at large, no residency required. We have four openings and four candidates, four applicants. It should be very easy.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint all four people that are.
That's a good motion, it's a very good motion. So we have a motion for the Cemetery Board to, to appoint Jim Galley, Kathy Hanlon, Asa Maddox and Carol Walton. We have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on that, council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved for the Cemetery Board, Jim Galley, Kathy Hanlon, Asa Maddox and Carol Walton. Next, we're moving to the Ethics Commission. Here again is one that doesn't meet a whole lot, we hope they don't meet a whole lot. This one here is appoint three members of the pool of six. All selected applicants must meet the city residency requirement ordinance specified that no candidate may have a substantial business interest within the city, act as a member of another board or commission of a city, be an employee or elected official by the city, or be related to any of the above. Advocate John Curtner has applied for other boards. Keep that in mind, folks, they can't serve on another board. We done did it, so we can scratch them now. So we have three, three openings, two are not seeking, one is seeking reelection, that is Vicki Lee, which is the chairman. Steve Fortin and Gary Milner have, have, are not seeking reappointment. So we have three openings with six applicants. Council, I will entertain a motion to nominate any of the six applicants for the, for the three positions. Councilman Mobley.
I would like to nominate Vicki Lee, so she's the assistant chair. And Romeo Bashan, he is a master's in ethics, and who knew that even existed?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, I just got a question for Councilman Mobley. Is that, is that, that's only two?
You got. You don't, you don't have to nominate all three, yeah, but when we vote.
I nominate the same two and also add Julie Shores.
So the new, we got Julie Shores now.
Yeah, uh, in her, in her resume, she taught ethics.
Okay.
So I don't know what the extent of teaching ethics is.
Right now, we got three. Council, any more nominations? Any more nominations? So we do have three nominations for a board of three, should be easy here. So we have a nomination for Romeo Bashard and Vicki Lee and Julia Shores, Bashan, I'm sorry. Romeo Bashan, Vicki Lee and Julia Shores for the Ethics Commission Board. We got a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion on that, council?
Just one more, Mayor.
One more, go ahead.
And I don't know what the council thinks about this, but maybe, maybe coming up with something that, the people that we appoint to this specific board, and it's just my opinion, maybe they need to be a resident for one year, get to know the board, or get to know the council members. I mean, I hate to have somebody that's here for one month on the Ethics.
What is the city residence requirement?
There's not one.
No?
So I just want to bring that up to the city council, and then just let you know that we can, anybody can, I mean, obviously, we elect these people, but they don't even have to be here for, but, a week.
We can put that as a future agenda.
Yes.
Change that.
Yep.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved, Romeo Bashard, Vicki Lee and Julia Shores for the Ethics Commission. Next, our Grandberry Cultural Arts Commission. Note, appoint three members, ordinance requires that four of the seven-member board must be city residents, and due to the remaining members of the board, two of the three appointed must be, so, keep that in mind, council, two of the three appointed must be city residents. Right now, we have Robert Cook. Right now, we have Robert Cook, Patricia Hall, and Chad Ramsey. Patricia Hall is not seeking reappointment. Chad Ramsey is a city resident, and Robert Cook is a non-resident. Our applicants we have are Robert Cook, Jeff Cranston, Norman Fott, Melissa Hindren, Zach Maxwell, Logan McHeffrey, Kathy Montgomery, Linda Brock-Pow, and Chad Ramsey. So counsel, out of the three, you've got several applicants here. Do I have any nominations for the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley.
I'd like to nominate Robert Cook, Logan McHaffey, and Chad Ramsey.
Okay. Counsel, any more nominations?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I'd like to nominate Robert Cook, Kathy Montgomery. Didn't not see if she's a city resident.
She's not.
Okay. Well, that's out the window. Then...
Wait a minute, we're not putting her on there? She's not?
If, I think she, we had to...
Two of the three, okay, we still put her on there.
Okay, then I nominate Robert Cook, Kathy Montgomery, and Chad Ramsey.
You got Chad Ramsey, okay. Counsel, any more nominations for the three positions? We'll have to have show of hand on this one, because we have, we have now four. And Kathy is a non-resident?
Is Robert Cook a non-resident as well?
Yes, he was.
So...
One of, two of those can't, they can't both be on.
So we can't. I agree.
Yeah, we're still got to vote on them.
We still got to vote on them.
Only one of them can.
Okay, we have four nominations. All in favor of Robert Cook, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. Logan McHaffey, is that him? Logan? Let's see, wait a minute, hold on.
It's Rosie, yeah.
I think she's great, but I'm really... Okay. So counsel, you selected the top three for those positions would be Chad Ramsey, Robert Cook, which is a non-resident, and Logan McHaffey, which is a resident. So we have Chad Ramsey, Robert Cook, and Logan McHaffey. Do I have a motion to put those three in, on the board of Granberry Cultural Arts Commission?
Some move.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan, and a second by Councilman Reiner. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Robert Cook, Logan McHaffey, and Chad Ramsey on the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission. Our next one is the Granberry Parks Board. Here again, we've going to appoint three members at large, no residency required. We have three people coming off, we have three on the board, two are not seeking reappointment, and one is seeking. We have Josh Morris, or Josiah Morris is not seeking appointment, and Julia Penel is not seeking appointment, and Kay Wazalinski is seeking reappointment. We have Jamie Cornell, Norman Fott, bear in mind, we put on one Rick Levate, I guess, Zach Maxwell, Logan McHaffey, Chad Ramsey, which we put on one, and Kay Wazalinski for the applicants. Counsel, I'm looking for three nominations. Counsel, do you have any nominations for that board?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Rick Levate, Zach Maxwell, and Kay are my nominations.
Kay, Kay Wazalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would also like to add Jamie Cornwell.
Okay. Counsel, I have any more nominations? So we have four and three positions, so we will vote on this. All in favor of Jamie Cornwell?
Cornwell.
One, two, three, four. All in favor of Rick Levate?
Well said.
Well said, yeah. I'm trying to keep up with my own notes for my voting purposes here. Okay, well, we got one, two, three, four, five. I started saying somebody, I don't need you. Kay Wazalinski. One, two, three, four. Okay, the tally is with those three positions, the top three is Kay Wazalinski, Rick Levate, and Jamie Cornwell. I got a motion. I got a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those three appointments are appointed.
We've got two years to learn Rick's last name.
Rick will do.
Yeah, Rick.
Okay, we've got another biggie here. Granberry Regional Airport Board, everybody wants to be on it. We're going to appoint three regular members at large and one member to fill an unexpired term ending in January 21. The unexpired seat was vacated by Steve Roth, with Council action-curing alternate member Larry French's term ends in January 2021. He can be appointed as a regular member and fill that vacancy left by Steve Roth, and then an applicant can be appointed for an alternate member filling the unexpired term of January 21. No residency required. So first of all, we'll do counsel. If counsel chooses to go ahead and put...
Larry French.
Yeah. To move Larry French into that vacancy, then the one that we will fill will be the alternate.
Yes.
So do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Mobley. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So we'll put Larry French into the term that is unexpired. So his name comes off the list over here if he's not, he's not on there, okay. Now, now we'll be filling three positions.
And an alternate.
And an alternate, so we got four positions here now. Councilman Mobley.
I would like to go ahead and nominate the three whose terms are expiring, to keep that board together, since we're right in the middle of a big project out there. But also, as an alternate, I would like to nominate Shay Hopkins, who's with the Economic
So you're nominating Monte Johnson, Shay Hopkins, and Lon Wimmerly, right?
And Andy Rash.
And Andy Rash?
Yep.
That's the four. So we got a nomination for Shay Hopkins as an alternate, and Monte Johnson, Andy Rash, and Lon Wimmerly. I'd like to nominate Ottley Smith. Counsel, any more nominations for this airport board?
Mayor, I nominate the same person. I had a...
Who'd you nominate?
Ottley Smith.
Okay.
It was either James Edward.
Well, he's already, yeah, we've already got him.
Yeah.
We just need to vote. Any more, any different nominations here, folks? Okay. So we've got four. We've got four openings here, actually, three and one alternate, and we've only got one nominated for the alternate, so we got three and one. Let's go ahead and approve the alternate. We only got one alternate here, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Shay Hopkins as the alternate.
So moved.
I have that motion by...
Second.
Bruce Wadley, and a second by Councilman Mobley. All in favor of Shay Hopkins as the alternate, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Shay Hopkins will be the alternate. So now we have four for the three positions here. We have Monte Johnson. Show of hands for Monte Johnson.
We show up here...
Six, okay. Andy Rash. One, two, three, four. So out of the three remaining, we have Monte Johnson, Andy Rash, and Lon Wimmerly. I have a motion. Have a motion by Councilman Reiner, and a second?
Second.
Second by...
Greg Corgan.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Carla, I'm circling them, just in case you're not keeping up with them.
I got them.
Oh, you got them? Okay. Our next one is the Historic Preservation Commission. Note, point four members at large. The ordinance requires that four of the seven-member commission be owners of a landmark or property in the historic district. The remaining must be city residents. Due to the current members of the commission, at least one of the four appointed must be an owner of a landmark or property in the historic district. That's the HBO. Councilman Rodriguez.
Have you already?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm getting ready. So right now, we have, we have four positions coming open. Stan Wazalinski, which is the chairperson, Victoria Connors, which is not seeking reappointment, Bob Purnell, which is not seeking reappointment, and Claudia Southern, that is not seeking reappointment. So we have four positions there, and we have eight applicants here. So at this time, I'll take nominations for those four positions.
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Nominate Mark McDonald, Amanda Peck, Stan Wazalinski, and Carrie Young.
So we got three.
Mayor.
Councilman Corgan.
I'd like to add Norman Fott.
Norman Fott?
Yes, since we need a city resident.
Isn't he already on one?
Well, it said one of the, oh, I'm sorry, it goes backwards.
Let me go back. Councilman Rodriguez, who was your nominations? Mark McDonald, Stan Wazalinski, and Carrie Young?
And Amanda.
Oh, Amanda, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that one.
Norman's already on, I thought, building or...
Do we have any more nominations? Councilman Rodriguez pointed out that Norman is on one right now, the one he had number four on, yeah.
Never meet.
Yeah, that never meet. Remind you, that never meets.
This one meets twice a month, this historic preservation.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, we have one, two, three, four, five nominations for four positions. I will go down the list. I'll keep up my own list here. Norman Fott. One, two, three. Mark McDonald. One, two, three, four, five. Amanda Peck. One, two, three, four, five. Stan Wazalinski. One, two, three, four, five. And Carrie Young. One, two, three, five. Okay, counsel, we got a three-way, well, we've got, actually, no, we've got...
That's right.
We got four, yeah. So our four, our four appointees will be Stan Wazalinski with six, and all the others have five, Mark McDonald, Amanda Peck, and Carrie Young. Have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are appointed. Just when we were getting good, we were about to finish that. Here again, the MUEAD, the Municipal Utility Advisory Board, we appoint three members at large, one member to fill an unexpired term ending in January 2021. The unexpired seat was vacated by Tom Baker, no resident required. Here we have three openings. Laura Bush is not seeking reappointment, Jerry Colborg is seeking reappointment, James Jarrett is seeking reappointment, and we have a vacant seat, which is unexpired. So we have four openings with six applicants. We got Rob Bishop, Jerry Colborg, Ron Curtner, Norman Fott, James Jarrett, and Zach Maxwell. Counsel, I'm looking for nominations.
Mayor.
Councilman Reiner.
I'll nominate Rob Bishop, Jerry Colborg, John Curtner, and James Jarrett.
Rob Bishop, Jerry Colborg, James Jarrett, you say?
Yeah.
Who's the other one? Did you have another one?
John Curtner.
John Curtner, okay. So we've got four right now. Counsel, any more nominations? Hey, you're making it easy for me.
Do we have to specify who's filling the unexpired term?
Yes.
Yes, we will.
I think John Curtner is also on another board as well.
Oh, yeah, he's on Buildings San.
Yeah, he is.
Buildings.
You're welcome to put another name on there. They never meet, though. They never meet. Give him a chance. So counsel, we have four nominations. What I'd like to do first is to take on the vacant, the unexpired term ending in 2021. Out of those four, do we have a nomination for that position?
Mr. Mayor?
Got to have one.
I'll nominate Jim Jarrett.
James Jarrett, okay. Unexpired. We have a second. We had a nomination of James Jarrett and a second for the unexpired. Any more discussion? Lost one of my council members.
He timed out.
We'll have to wait, folks.
This is the fight for it.
Well, we do have a quorum.
Yeah, you can do this.
You can go right in.
Well, I hate to do this, folks. We have a quorum without him, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. No, he didn't make a nomination, he made some nominations. For James Jarrett as the unexpired. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. James Jarrett will be the... James Jarrett will be the un the unexpired one. Now, I need a motion for Rob Bishop, Jerry Colburn, and John Kertner.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Planning and zoning commission, note, appoint four members at large. A seat was vacated by Councilmember Rodriguez upon election. Whoever is appointed to that seat will be appointed to a full two-year term. All members must reside in the city limits for at least 12 months prior to being appointed by registered city voters and shall not be errors in tax. All Africans listed in the city residence and all have indicated that they are registered city voters. So that unexpired will be, I mean, the vacant seat will be a two-year term. So no special vote needed. Right now, we have four positions. Richard Hoffs has indicated he wants to re, to run. Shirley Hook is not seeking reappointment. Randall Moore is seeking reappointment. And we have the vacant seat. With that, we have five nominations. Jamie Cornwell, Norman Fott, Jim Gally, Richard Hoffs, and Randall Moore. Counsel, any nominations? Mary Ella Riley on there?
We got the wrong list.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong list. Thank you. Mary Ella Riley. You need four. Everybody had Mary Ella Riley on their list? Must've picked up the wrong one here.
That's, I, I did look at that, Councilman Mobley. I did notice that, and I did put it down as a note that she's a current ZBA member till January 2021.
Okay. So out of that, counsel, for the four nominations, I'm looking, and we got six nominations. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley.
I nominate Jamie Cornwell, Jim Gally, Richard Hoffs, Randall Moore.
And who, Randall Moore?
Yes, sir.
You have four? Pardon?
Yeah.
Jamie, Jim, Richard, and Randall. Any more nominations?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I nominate the same four.
Thank, well. So makes it pretty easy. We got four nominations, four positions. Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to add Norman Fott.
Okay.
Let me ask a question.
Ask a question.
Improvement Advisory Committee, how involved is that board?
They, um, they have to meet pretty quick this year, but it's a, it's a statutory board that we have to have for the impact fees. And so they have to give a five-year report, walk through that with an engineering firm to do all that, and make a new report to us. So it's more, it's more of a cycle than a monthly or annual meeting even. Like this year, they didn't meet, the last year, they didn't meet at all in 2019.
So I'd like to nominate Norman Fott for that. He's, he's been appointed to the Counter Improvements Advisory Board, and yet, they may meet for a short period, and that'll be it for his tenure. So I'd like to, I'd like to give Norman a little more to do.
Yeah. I'd like it. So we've got a nomination of one, two, three, four, five now. Who we nominated, Mary Ella Riley? Did I miss something here? Okay. So counsel, we got a nomination of five nominations. Any more? Hearing none, all in favor of Jamie Cornwell? Raise your hands. One, two. Norman Fott. One, two, three, four. Jim Gally. One, two. Richard Hoffs. Hoffs, whatever. One, two, three, six, yeah. Randall Moore. One, two. And that was it, yeah. It looks like we've got Randall Moore with six, Richard Hoffs with six, and Norman Fott with five. And Jim Gally, I'm sorry. Thank you. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Corgan, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. By the way, Carlos, thanks for putting this together for us. Makes it a lot easier here to go through all this stuff. Our next one is the Public Television Channel Advisory Board. They meet quarterly, don't they? They meet monthly, don't they? Yeah. Uh, note, the board, they appoint four members at large, one member to fill an unexpired term ending in January 2021. The unexpired seat was vacated by John Boyd. The board consists of seven members. A majority of members must be city residents. One of the two remaining members on the board are city residents. Therefore, at least three city residents must be appointed. And let's see, we're filling the unexpired term 2021, so we probably should do that one separately. Because they're only going to be serving until 2021. We'll take nominations for, okay, we got five board members that are up for reappointment. You got John Back, Ronnie Hurd is not seeking reappointment, Kevin Myers seeking reappointment, McCary Warden seeking reappointment, and the vacant seat. With that, we have John Back as a resident, Corey Caldwell, John Kertner, city resident, Zach Maxwell, city resident, Logan McCaffrey, city resident, Gary Miller, city resident, Kevin Myers, Shad Ramsey, and McCary Warden. Counsel, do I have any nominations for those four positions? Councilman Reiner.
Uh, I nominate, excuse me, I nominate John Back, Zach Maxwell, Gary Miller, Kevin Myers, and McGary Warden.
Okay, we have five nominations. Does anybody have any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Corey Caldwell.
Corey Caldwell. Counsel, any more nominations? No more, hearing none, I entertain a most, uh, I'm sorry. We've got more applicants than we've got positions here, so we'll go down the list here.
What do the expired term?
Pardon?
We do the unexpired term first.
So the first one we're going to vote on is the expired term, the vacant, expired term. Out of those nominations, do I hear a, have a nomination for that expired term?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, we got one.
I nominate McGary.
Who?
McGary Warden.
McGary Warden has been nominated for the expired term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Rodriguez.
Oh, he's serving an expired term now?
He keeps him on.
That's rough.
Well, yeah, he's serving, he's serving, he's serving a full term right now.
No. He began his term in 2029.
Oh, he did, okay.
For the expired term.
Yeah, I don't think that would be possible. It would, it would probably have to be one of the new, it's not on the board already. Like the Corey Caldwell. Or we could do it that way. If you choose to do that, counsel, we could take the one that gets the least votes here.
Who made that motion?
Yep.
He would have to change it.
Rescind it.
Rescind it.
I rescind it.
You got to rescind it, you got to rescind it through the fact that she's already serving, or he's already serving it, yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Why can't he not do the other unexpired?
He's serving it right now. He started in September 2019. He's serving an unexpired one. He's serving a unexpired one right now.
It expired first of January.
He could.
Yeah, you could put him on for another year.
You want to leave him on there?
He'd be on another year, then he can run next year.
So McGary, McGary Warden has been nominated as the unexpired. Yeah, because he's coming off, yeah. And we have a second by Councilman
I'll second.
Corgan.
Or Corian.
Yeah.
Okay.
You all sound alike down there. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor for McCary Warden as, serving as the vacant unexpired term? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So we have one nay. It is approved, put McGary Warden in the unexpired. So that leaves four seats now available with five nominations. All in favor of John Back? Raise your hands. Six. All in favor of Corey Caldwell? Show of hands. Zach Maxwell? Show of hands. Gary Miller? Show of hands. Kevin Myers? Show of hands. And that is it. Go for our our four, we have John Back, Kevin Myers, Gary Miller, and Zach Maxwell. Have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley. And a second by Councilperson Reiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Next and final board is the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Note, appoint three regular members and one alternate member. The member, the alternate member seat was vacated by Mary Ella Riley. When she was appointed as a regular member to fill a seat vacant by Tom Baker. So whoever is appointed to the vacant alternate member seat will be appointed to a full two-year term. All members must reside in the city and be registered city voters. All applicants listed are city residents, all indicated that they are registered city voters. So actually, the alternate is going to serve a full term. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay, so we go well, we need to designate which one's going to be the alternate, though.
Mr. Mayor.
Nope, it becomes full-time.
It does? I know it's going to be full-term, but they're going to have to serve as an alternate.
Right now, Kenneth is the alternate.
So we got four positions, three positions, one alternate, and we have one, two, three, four applicants over here. Right now, I am looking for a nomination for the vacant alternate seat.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to nominate Norm Fott.
Norm Fott?
Yes.
Vacant.
Yes, we've given him enough to do already.
Yes. Do I have any more nominations for the vacant seat? We're hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to put Norman Fott on the vacant seat.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and I'll be Greg Corgan down there.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I'll make a motion to appoint the rest of the
Wait, hang on, wait, we got to go through this one first.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the vacant seat for Norman Fott. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Norman Fott will be on the vacant seat. Now we have three other ones. And we have three applicants. So that's an easy one there. All in favor, I'll entertain a motion to put Kenneth Cadenhead, and Ronnie Hurd, and Fay Landham on the other positions.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corgan, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Very good. Once again, for the folks out there, I'm glad people are applying for these. It's, as you can see, we have a, not a, not a bad problem, but we have a lot of applicants in some of these positions. Continue to put your name, continue to have that interest to serve on these boards. They're very important to the city council, and we hope that we can move some people into those positions that haven't had the opportunity. Hopefully, we're trying to capture all of them that haven't been on any of them and put them in the right places and, and utilize them so that we can get them on these boards. But once again, thank you, and let people know that those boards are available. We, we always, you can come up to the city hall at our city secretary's office and apply for these boards. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to our executive session. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session, and all of our members are present in the city council. We're going to closed session pursuant to the provision of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551071, consultation with the attorney, Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiation. We're now going to executive session. It was reconvened in the open session. There was no action taken out in the executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the city attorney, city attorney to further investigate and take necessary action in accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion number KP0287.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to turning that over to the, our city attorney. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, the council meeting is now adjourned.